I call the Owatonna City Council meeting to order for Tuesday, June 4th. May we have roll call tonight?
Councilmember Svenby?
Here.
Trulson?
Aye.
Dodson?
Here.
Schultz?
Here.
Burbank?
Here.
Rainey?
Here.
Abraham?
Here.
And Mayor Coons. We have all council and no mayor.
Thank you. Please rise and join me in the pledge of allegiance. I'd like to welcome everyone here tonight and thank you for coming to the meeting. And with that, we do not have any changes to the agenda that I know of. And we'll look for a motion to approve the agenda as presented.
So.
We have a motion by Raymond to approve, a second by Greg. Any further discussion? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? The agenda has been approved as presented. With that, we'll move on to our 1.5 legislative update. And we have Representative John Petersburg here. Welcome, and if you would join us at the podium.
Thank you, Mr. Abrams. I hope everybody can hear me, and thanks for inviting me back to kind of bring you up to speed as to what we did and didn't do up at the state Capitol. It's always nice to be back here to Owatonna and see friendly faces and a little less formal compared up at the Capitol. So again, thank you. And if you have any questions, I will certainly bring them, answer them as best I can. When I talked to Mayor Coons, he asked me if I would kind of bring you up to speed on a few topics at least. One of them that he asked specifically had to do with the Angel Tax Credit. And I co-sponsored a couple of different bills for that in which we were trying to raise the grant for Angel Credit to more and to do a percentage that went to greater Minnesota. Unfortunately, none of those end up getting heard, and so currently, the bill is pretty much the same as it was, the law. 2013, there was about $12 million that were set aside for that. From my understanding, all of them have been awarded, but there is another $12 million that's appropriated. And those Angel Credit applications will be starting to be accepted in November, from what I understand. So there are some funds, but we really think, at least I believe, that it's a one benefit that we have out in greater Minnesota, try to get more investment and more people to initiate growth and employment here in outstate Minnesota. So we'll keep trying with that. I'm sure most of you are aware of the LGA increases that occurred this year at the state Capitol. There was approximately $80 million more put into that line item. It allowed for some growth in 2014. I think Owatonna is going to generate about additional $700,000 or so, if I'm correct, something in that area. There were, I believe, about 31 cities that had been off of that role of suburbs around up in Minneapolis area that will now be getting some more of the LGA credit. And so it's, it is a benefit, I think, to cities that really need to help with infrastructure to be able to stay in more equitable footing with some of the larger cities. There are still about 61 city suburbs that currently do not get any LGA funding, and those would be the ones that you're trying to equalize with. So I think that's a positive piece for Owatonna. Wasika got about the same percentage of growth as well, and so that's something that we can do to help with property tax relief. But it doesn't, it, there was nothing in the bill to actually change property taxes per se. It was really just transferring those funds. Couple other things that I think are probably critical or important that benefit, and I know Chris is aware of this too, is that cities and counties now have been exempted from sales tax, which is, I think, a great deal. It's kind of paying yourself, shall we say, for that, and that could make quite a difference. And I think Chris probably knows, and at least anticipated savings to the state, to the, excuse me, to the city, that that occurs. Some of the things that are going to be probably a little problematic in some areas, the $1.60 increase in tax for cigarette pack, pack of cigarettes, is going to hurt a lot of businesses, I think, especially in surrounding border cities. Now, we have, in my information here, North Dakota's at 44 cents, Iowa's at $1.36, and South Dakota's $1.53. So South Dakota is fairly close to what we have now. But our total with that $1.60 will bring it up to 208 a pack, just for the tax on cigarettes. And so that's something that we'll kind of have to watch and see how that impacts the rest. But it's, that's one of the options, one of the primary options that I think the governor and the legislature is thinking that that's a fallback for paying off the Viking Stadium. So those dollars are kind of earmarked for that particular area.
John, was that pretty in favor of the both sides' parties on that?
No, that was pretty much by part, strictly right down partisan lines. It's, you know, without getting into political stance, I tend to be more conservative, and anytime you do a very aggressive tax like that, that is really geared more towards the working class, and is really the same amount, whether you're rich, poor, or whatever, you're going to smoke the same, you're going to cost the same, it really increases the cost and impact to them. So, you know, that's a concern. There are a couple other controversial bills that occurred this year. I'm sure you're aware of those. I'll just, I won't touch on them, but I'll mention them. The health care bill that impacts just about everybody. It'll impact even premiums here in the state, in the city as well. We had the, of course, the marriage bill that was passed, the unionization authorization for daycare providers, which are really independent private business owners. All of those were fairly controversial, pretty much went down by partisan levels. The tax bill was another one that was quite controversial, in at least my opinion. When you add over $2 billion in new taxes, a new tax level, and then you add on top of it $300,000 to $600,000 in additional, or excuse me, $300 to $600 million in additional fees, you're pushing in a lot of extra dollars coming in. And I know that the spending over the previous biennium is increased by almost $3 billion. A lot of the difference, of course, is in the growth of the economy, growth of the increase in revenues from taxation, et cetera, that has been in place for the last few years. So there are quite a few new changes occurring with some of those fees. At last count, the state grew about 1,300 new jobs with this particular legislation, some of it's in the highway department, et cetera. Getting on to something that's more dear to us, Highway 14. There are a couple of things. I was with Mayor Tom, and Les, I was with you too, in Rochester the other day, and we heard about another exciting opportunity for us here, and that is a grant to the federal department. It just got sent out. We have no idea whether it will be granted for it or not, but it has an opportunity for us to expand a little bit more of the four lane east of Owatonna. So we'll see how that goes, and we'll cross our fingers. Because I think anything we can do, we need to keep chipping away to do it. The corridors of commerce, which is part of this transportation finance bill, as well as the policy bill, is created for us to have another opportunity for the Department of Transportation, at least another tool in their toolbox, to develop opportunities to help with our infrastructure, especially in roads and bridges. Now, there is not a great deal of direction and parameters given and how those dollars will be funded, but there was $300 million appropriated for that through the trunk highway bonds. So I would expect next year, as the legislature gets involved, we will be dealing with more on the policy of how that gets used. But it could go a long ways for helping us, and it's another avenue in which we can look at roads and evaluate them by more than just safety, or how many cars are going across it, or trucks going across it, but also how effective is it for commerce, for developing economic development. And some of the things that we see out here in greater Minnesota are really worthwhile for us at the state and at the county level. So I'm very excited about getting that done, and we hope that that'll continue to improve. Earlier, I kind of told other people, I'm trying to make sure that Highway 14 stays on the tip of everybody's tongue, and I think it was mentioned on the floor of the House at least five times in various discussions on various bills, and in committee, it's being done all the time, and even in writing. So the more we can keep it in the front of people, the more likely we'll get that done. So I'm excited with that. There were a lot of smaller bills and other things that came fast and furious through the end of the session, but I think at this point, I'll leave it at this, unless you guys have some questions that I could answer, so.
Thank you. Any questions from the council? Raymond?
Is there any, the next session, anything important that we need to know? It's going to come next session, so we maybe can help, or is there anything coming that you know that's going to be?
Not really. As you know, in every legislative session, it's really a two-year session, it's a biennium, and the budget is a biennium which was set this year. So all of the spending is pretty much set, unless there are some minor tweaks that we do, but nothing major. So next year, we'll be spent on dealing with corrections, policy issues, and of course, the one big spending thing is the bonding bill that occurs in the off-year. And I think even the DFL kind of feels the same way, because they adjourned us until February 25th, which is very late for starting of the session. And so we're only going to be open for 13 weeks, which I think is the minimum that we can be, according to statute. So I would expect that there is going to be some fairly significant bonding issues. This year, there was an attempt to put an $800 million bonding bill passed. That did get voted down. As you know, bonding bills require a supermajority, and they were, I think, six votes short of that. But we did, at the very last day, pass a very small bonding bill, which was to just complete some of the ongoing expenses that were half. The bulk of it went to the Capitol Building itself. About $109 million went to keep the remodeling and refurbishing going with that, and there'll be another something like that next year to finish it off. It's a 100-year-old building and has not had an awful lot of work done since it started. Architects are very concerned about some of the infrastructure, some of the outside fascia is starting to crumble a little bit. So they're working on windows right now, and we'll keep on going with that. There was another $22 million, I think, for a parking ramp, because if, those of you who've been up there, the Sears parking lot used to be available for parking, they're selling that off and going to put, we think condominiums there. So this will be replacement for parking for the Capitol. And then two others that are fairly critical, there are some flood mitigation issues that have been started, that needed a little funding, and a veterans home up in Minneapolis, who was about halfway through its renovation, needs a few million dollars to do that. So all told, the final bonding bill this year was only $180 million, more than I could afford, but it was under $180 million. And so I expect that next year, there'll be a lot more projects and stuff going for next year. But to me, I think that that's going to be the bulk of what we have going next year. Between now and then, a lot of stuff can change and happen, but that's the anticipation.
You need help, ask. If you need help on anything, ask.
Well, absolutely. I appreciate that, and some of you have been up to visit me, and I appreciate that too. It's always fun to have somebody up there and visit and walk around with us. So Nate, I got to get you up there sometime, too. But I appreciate it, and the same thing goes with you. If you hear anything and see anything, let me know. I know Mayor Coons has contacted me a couple of different times, et cetera. One of them, by the way, I was going to talk about, is there was, passed through the committees, the ability for street improvement districts, but somehow that got missed in the shuffle, and I don't think that ended up being in any of the omnibus bills, which surprised me, because I think it passed both House and Senate, but for some reason, it got pulled. So whereas the street improvement district's still there, the change would have been that it would have allowed cities to be able to incorporate and provide for them without voter approval. So right now, it still can be done, but it requires a ballot and a voter approval for that, so.
Any other questions?
I've just got a comment. Reading the Minneapolis paper this morning, I believe it's DOT is going to spend $30 million on a survey in regards to light rail between Rochester and Minneapolis. And it just seems that as Rochester continues to find more ways to get the money, and Highway 14 seems to continue to go down on a priority list, and that's frustrating.
Absolutely, it is. A couple of things, I'll comment on that. On the one hand, I'm kind of using the Destination Medical Center, which is what that's called, and the need for strong arteries going into it as another plus for Highway 14 getting it finished from 35. So I'm still using as well.
As well, yes.
Exactly, that tool. But in regards to mass transit, whether it's rail, or fast rail, or light rail, or even busing, I think one of the things that we need to understand is, and one of the things that I'm a little bit disappointed in, is that most of our transportation needs are covered by gasoline tax, vehicle sales tax, and vehicle registration fees. And all of those fund most of our transportation. Now, up in the metro area, they also have an individual sales tax up there that also helps for light rail. But the rest of the infrastructure for roads and bridges are included in that batch, plus that also pays for the highway patrol that patrol it. It also pays for airports and airport maintenance outside of the MAC Council. And it also includes ports of authority on the Mississippi River and Duluth. So we have cars and trucks primarily funding most of our transportation, and it gets very few dollars from the general budget. We get to Fairmount from federal funds, but that just pays for, is kind of paid for itself plus these others. Now, the concern that I have is busing right now, the bus transportation transit is running an average of between 30 and 35 percent of the cost to maintain it and run it, it comes from the fares. So that means it's being subsidized about 70 percent or so from, again, cars and so forth. Light rail has even a worse record. It's running somewhere between 20 and 25 percent of the fares. And of course, when we hear it from Minneapolis-St. Paul's side, they said, but that's where our young people, they want to come downtown with light rail and with mass transportation because it's convenient for them, it's cheaper for them. And we say, yes, it is, because you're not paying your fair share. And we attempted, a colleague of mine tried to put in amendment to one of the bills, asking us to at least try to raise that percentage from 35 percent to 40 percent. And it didn't go anywhere, mainly because they said, we're doing as well as any other city in the United States. So I agree with you, $30 million for that trans, for that high-speed rail between Rochester and the cities is nice, but to me, it's one of those things that if we have the money, that's great, but don't we have higher priority needs for that? So there has, there has been some monies set aside in various pieces for things like that, so I don't know that it's going to impact appropriations for anything, but I agree with you. I think it's kind of silly when we have so many other issues we should be dealing with, so.
To add to that, Rochester, I did have a meeting in Rochester, and the city is very much in favor of getting 14 done. So it's on their priority list, along with the Destination Medical Clinic, so.
Seems like it's on everyone's priority list, except the one that matters.
Yeah, right. I do have a question on the quarter of commerce. Is there some kind of a definition of what that quarter is?
There's very generic ones as to, in the law itself, there is, and I can't quote it to you offhand, but there is, but it needs to be defined better. And also the parameters on, and what is looked at and what isn't. And that, I'm hoping, we will be dealing more directly with next year in session. So right now, it's, there is money set aside, and the Department of Transportation has it in their toolbox, shall we say, but there's no direction really on how to use it yet at this point. So like I've told other people too, my hope is that within the next four or five years, we've got it in the plan somewhere, and my hope is completed within 10. Because I think it's more than time. I tell people, forget about the 20-year plan, and we're already in the 60-year plan, so let's get it done. It's important. It's important.
Thank you. Any other questions from the council?
Thanks for coming.
Thank you for coming.
Thank you. Thank you very much for coming.
Thank you. And like I say, if you have anything for me to be looking for or working with up there, let me know, and I'll do what I can. All right? Thanks.
Thank you. And with that, we'll move on to 1.6, public hearing for proposed assessments, and with that, we'll go to Kyle.
Good evening. This is the 2012 sidewalk construction project, and then it also includes one property that was a holdover from the 2011 project.
And this is a public hearing, with that, we'll open up the meeting for public hearing at 7:22. So if anyone would like to speak to that, please come to the microphone and sign in.
Hello, I'm Alan Radell, and I own the property where China Bethay is at 114 Broadway. And about two years ago, in 2011, I received a assessment notice, a proposed assessment, for doing the sidewalk in front of my building. And I did not object to it, so at that time, and I didn't send any objection letter. And I wanted the sidewalk replaced. Then, in the summer of 2011, the project was started, and they discovered, there was a vault underneath the sidewalk. And I was called and told that I'd have to pay for it, and I objected to it, because I've owned a property before that had the same situation, and I was not charged anything for filling the vault. The city picked up part of the charge, and the utilities picked up the balance. And I was told, well, we're going to do the project anyhow. If you object to it, you'd have to bring an action against us in court to settle it. And I objected to it, but they were, I was told they were going to go ahead, so I asked if I could at least, if you're going to do it, replace my water and sewer to the building, which I did. And they went ahead with the project, and they were going to, we had a hearing here at the council, and with the assessment thing, and I objected to it. And I met with Chris and Jeff, and I asked for the, when there was a change of policy, that the building owner would pay for it. And after a couple months, I was told, well, we can't provide any information on a change of policy, because there wasn't any. So then, in January, February of 2012, they went on record changing the policy where the property owner would pay for filling the vault. Well, and since then, I have met, I've talked with Chris, and I've talked to Kyle, and my objection is, if there's a policy change, that's fine, but you can't make a policy change and make it retroactive. I never had the opportunity, advance notice that they're going to fill this vault, and they just went ahead and did it over my objections, and then they changed the policy that I'm to pay for it. That doesn't pass the smell test. You know, they're asking me, we're going to change it and then make it retroactive. That's not fair. I object to it. I do not object to the sidewalk assessment, it's just filling the vault. And I'd appreciate it if you would give me some serious consideration of the city paying their share, the utilities already has paid their share. Thank you very much. Any questions?
Anything to comment on that?
Obviously, I wasn't involved in.
Yes.
And I, you know, as far as I can tell.
I can hear very good, as I think.
From what I can tell from the notes, they did meet with you when the vault was discovered, and it was 6th of October of 2011 that they met with you after the vault was discovered. And as far as the other discussions, I wasn't involved, but they did get together with you before the vault was filled. I don't know what discussions took place at that time.
They did get together with me, and I told them my objection based on the prior experience I had with the same situation, a building that I own at Park Square. And I objected to me paying for it, because I wanted to go by the same policy that was in effect, that the utilities would pay part of it, and the city paid part of it. But they went ahead and did it, and I was told that I would have to bring an action. And so the project is done, and then I met, and then after the fact, and I believe it was January, February of 2012, is when they passed the policy change, that now the property owners will pay for filling the vault. And they did, the policy change is put into effect because there was not a policy change. That's the only reason they put the policy change in effect. So I object to that. You know, I'll go by the rules, but not retroactive. You know, that's not fair.
Maybe I can.
Chris?
Address that. When Mr. Radell first brought this issue up, we looked back in the records, and I believe it was 1982.
I can't hear real well.
It was 1982 or 1983 when that project was done, that you owned, that had a similar vault, correct? Jeff looked back in the records of that project, and what had happened then is those costs for filling the vault were included in the overall project costs. They weren't delineated out specifically, they were included in the overall costs. So you did, you were charged for filling the vault back in '82 and '83. And in looking back at our history of previous projects down there, we've always charged half of the cost to the property owner, and that has been our consistent practice. Our policy was not clear on that, and that's why we made the policy clear. And it wasn't being retroactive or changing it, it was just making it more clear.
Well, that's the nature of our disagreement. I don't agree with Chris. They couldn't provide me anything with a policy change. And so there wasn't a policy change, it's not of record. And so they, to clarify that, then they made the policy change. Otherwise, why would they make a policy change in January or February last year? So that's the nature of the disagreement that I have with Chris and Jeff, and it's just not fair. Any other questions? I might be.
What are we talking, 6,000, and we pays 3, and they pay 3?
Well, the cost to.
The vault.
Fill the vault was $7,250, of which half was paid. So the proposed assessment was, against Mr. Radell, was $3,625.
Yes.
For the vault, plus the portion of sidewalk that you.
The sidewalk, I don't object to. That's what I agree to, and that's not an issue. It's just this $3,000. And utilities went by their prior policy and paid their share.
Kyle? Is that 3,000, is that the total bill?
The total bill is $5,440.72. So that's $1,800 for the sidewalk and some change.
Okay. All right.
Well, I guess I would direct that question back to Chris then. Is there, so we have record of an assessment that included the vault filling from 1982?
Jeff Johnson had investigated, and that's what he had told me, yes.
But has Mr. Radell seen that?
I don't believe we have.
No, I've asked you.
Yeah.
Well, excuse me. I've asked Chris and Jeff to see that, and they said there was no policy thing, that's why they changed it in January or February.
I think, Al, what she's asking for, or Nate's asking for, is if that bill that showed where you paid it back in the, for property on Park Street.
Excuse me?
You paid, apparently, according to the billing, you paid for it, but it wasn't itemized out as a separate item.
Well, I didn't pay for it. Well, I didn't pay for it. The city and the utilities paid for it.
What you paid for was the total bill.
The old one, not the.
The old one. The old one. You paid a total bill that had it in there, but wasn't itemized.
Yes, I didn't pay anything. The city and the utilities paid it.
Okay.
No, in 1982 or 83, you know, obviously before I got here, there was a project downtown, which, there was a payment made, which included filling the vault of underneath that property. And, you know, we could certainly bring out those, dig out those records from 82, 83 to show that those costs were charged. There, as I said, the policy wasn't changed. The policy was clarified. Our past practice has been consistent in that we charge to fill vaults. We split the cost with the property owner.
I didn't pay anything less for the, my prior building. The city.
Did you pay for the sidewalk there?
No.
But you, did you have any assessments in 1982 on that?
I don't, no.
Well, I think if, we need to locate those records.
The city, for the vault, the city split the charge with the utilities. Just what I'm asking to do right now, today on this. And as far as this policy thing, you just, you can't make a policy, if it's not a record or something, you can't pull it out of the air. And that's what appears to be happening here. And that's what I'm objecting to. And to clarify that, that's why they changed it after the fact.
Yep. There are unwritten policies, and what, that's what she's talking about, is that if you look at the past practice of what was being done, that is actually a policy. Whether it was clarified by the, something in writing or not, that's one thing. But I have it, if you, if this is what you've been doing all along, it becomes an unwritten policy. That's what we're looking at right now, is to find out what that was. And if you did pay something back in 1982 or 83, obviously, you had to pay something if they repaired the sidewalk.
The, what they did then was, the purpose was to fill the vault then because the.
Okay. Mark, you?
Was it, Kyle, do you know from the record, was it in unsafe condition and needed to be filled?
The 114 Broadway?
Yes.
No, no, the 182.
No, no, I'm talking about the current one. Yes, the one on Broadway Street, on West Broadway.
Okay, on Broadway.
Yeah.
It needed, the sidewalk needed repair. Yeah, and I'm not objecting to that. I will pay for my sidewalk.
And what was the condition of the vault?
Well, that I don't know, Mark. The vault, I, I think they're filling all the vaults as they are doing something. I think the vaults are all, the purpose of the vault was when Owatonna had the steam pipes down the sidewalk there, and they were covered with asbestos, and they heated the sidewalks. And that, that was how they heated the downtown buildings. It was for the general public, not.
And wasn't it also used for, like, receipt of delivery of goods and the like?
Oh, yes. There used to be loading chutes.
That was the Woolworth store, wasn't it?
What's that?
That was the Woolworth store. That was the Woolworth store.
The Woolworth store, that's correct, yes.
But you don't object to the, you don't object to the cost. I mean, I know you object to paying that as an assessment, but you don't object to the, the cost itself of the 3,500?
No, it's the 18, I agree to the, whatever it is, 1,800, Kyle, right?
And some change here, yeah.
$1,800 is what I don't, I agree to the site, what's the normal thing. I object to filling the vault.
But you don't object that that cost was unreasonable. Your half of that, you're not saying that that was an unreasonable cost for that work?
Was a.
You're not saying that the, that your half, or the $3,500 approximately, that is your cost of that vault, you're not saying that that's an unreasonable cost, are you?
Well, I'm, I'm saying just the policy, in my opinion, the policy wasn't changed until after the fact. That's what I'm really objecting to. So, I'm objecting to that through the vault charge. I wasn't given prior notice before, so I didn't.
You had notice on, in October of 2011, Alan.
After the, after it was all dug up and open, it, not before, it's, they gave, that was after the fact, Mark.
I think that's when they learned it was there, though, isn't that right?
What's that?
Is that when they learned it was there?
I don't know if that's when they learned it was there, or, I think so.
Yeah.
Okay. Any other questions I might be able to answer?
I think we've asked call the questions at this point.
Okay. Thank you very much.
Anyone else wish to speak on this?
What about the other letter we received?
I think we should just note for, for the record, that we did also receive a letter from Gary Wolf stating his objection to the, the assessment. He felt the cause of his sidewalk was due to poor compaction of the ground when city pipe was replaced. And I just want us to note his objection for the record.
And I did receive a call from.
Ray?
Ray Wilmot, on his, where he's already paid for the sidewalk once, and the tree roots have raised it, and he didn't feel that he should have to pay for that again. So, his was more of a verbal objection than a written.
How long ago was that?
Last fall.
No, I mean, when was it done before?
About 10 or 11 years ago. Any other people wish to comment? Seeing none, I'll look for a motion to close the public hearing. A motion by Raymond to close the public hearing. Do you have a second?
Second.
Second by Dave Burbank. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed. Now, it's time for the council comments or questions. Does the council have any questions? Seeing none. Raymond?
I would like to see that, you know, if you got the past records that Al's maybe not seen from before, that we need to have, sit down and show that, them actual records from the job before. And I think we can come to some agreement with the other gentleman too. I think a friendly agreement between Kyle and whoever. I don't know if we, I think, meet with them and go through that a little more detail. I think, I'd like to poll those two to look at, I guess, again, before we make a decision on that. But I'll vote for the other part, you know, but I just think we, you know, we've kind of talked about this for a long time. I mean, and I think everybody wants to get it resolved, and, you know, I think we can come to a friendly agreement.
So, what you're saying is, poll these for the time being.
But I'll prove the rest of them.
Get the research done.
Yeah. And meet with them individually and just try to share. It was before, when that vault was done, and it wasn't called a vault, but we got the information. We need to share that. And I think we can do a friendly agreement and do the rest, but let's poll that two or three.
And then bring it back to the council for final approval.
Yeah. And I can make that a motion.
Okay, so the motion is to remove Al and the two other ones.
Right.
From this and approve the rest.
Rest, right.
Second that.
Okay, we have a motion by Raymond to remove Alan's objection and the other two, and approve the rest of them. So, and a second by Nate. Any further discussion? Seeing none. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed. This has been approved. And we will go do the research on that, Al.
Need to.
And find out what, what's really happened there, and then it will be brought back to the council for final approval.
But the job before, the job before, and bring that on the table, look at it.
Look at all the, look at all the facts.
Yeah.
Thank you.
Okay. Thank you. Okay. Next item on the agenda is res, financial reports. Right recap of the finances is $143,314 for cars and credit, MIF loan proceeds, $130,048 for Hesleton Construction for the East Broadway Street project, $336,657 for League of Minnesota Cities Insurance Trust Fund, annual property and liability premium, $125,669 for rental construction for Park Drive Sanitary Sewer Relocation, $163,799 for other expenditures, for a subtotal of $899,487. And to that, we add the $69,593 for June 1, Section 8 payments, for a total of $969,800 for total expenditures presented. What does the council wish?
Make a motion to pay the bills.
Motion by Kevin Rainey to pay the bills. Do we have a second to that? Second by Greg Schultz. Any further discussion? All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed. The next item on the agenda is our consent agenda items, which includes minutes, license permit requests, department reports, event permits, and other miscellaneous items. And we do have one on the NeoGov service, which I'll ask Lisa, Lynn, to kind of explain a little bit.
Hi, good evening. I wanted to bring up, talk about our online application process that we do right now for the City of Owatonna. After I've been here a year now, I've looked into and evaluated our process. And we have several applications that we receive for our openings that we have. For example, our Park and Rec Department alone for seasonal and temporary positions, we had 207 applications this summer, for the summer. And I would like to recommend purchasing an online program where it'll be very seamless for applicants to come into our website and apply online. And by applying online to NeoGov, they don't know that they're leaving our site. It's completely, you know, for the City of Owatonna. But it can save their credentials, so if they want to apply for another job later on, they can be notified. It keeps track of all of their names, addresses, phone numbers. So, when we need to schedule an interview, score the application, it can all be done online rather than printing everything off and typing everything in an Excel document, keeping it all up to date. That's very time consuming and a very manual process.
Thank you. Any questions from the council?
It sounds similar to what the school system uses. Is that correct?
Yep, it's a little bit different. NeoGov specializes in cities and counties. So, some of the other area around us that has NeoGov, Rice County uses it, and Rochester City and City of Mankato also uses it too. And I put a question out to my other HR colleagues there in the cities, and the majority of cities use NeoGov, and they rant and rave how great it is. When applicants apply online, they create a user profile. And for example, if they want to apply for a police job in Owatonna, they create their user profile and can apply for us. And if another city uses NeoGov as well, their credentials are saved, so they're not retyping everything in. On our system that we have now on our website, all they can do is retype their information. Nothing is saved. All we can do is print out their application. We can't run reports from the data that we receive, anything like that. And with NeoGov, they're all up to date on the rules and regulations for equal employment for the EEOC Commission. And we can run reports, rather, right now, we have to go manually through all the applications and all the files and gather that information.
Thank you. Any other questions?
I just have another one on the consent. Do you want to go there?
Okay. With that then, I guess, thank you very much for making the presentation. And are there any questions on the consent agenda items from the council? Raymond?
2.5.2, I just had a question. I understand he's, person's going to do four of those this year, and I was just concerned what the profits were given to. And I understand part of the next one, they're going to give to the scholarship fund. So, you know, I was wondering where the profits were going. He's going to run four of those this year. So, I called and asked Jeanette that question, and that's what he's planning on doing the next one. So, so I would just, go ahead, Chris.
Yeah. He did, Hamid stopped in yesterday, today, and let us know that, yeah, that's where he's planning to donate some funds. And he also dropped off his insurance certificate.
Because there was nothing on the sheet that said where his profits were going.
Anyone else have a question?
I guess I would follow up with that. The, the application is very vague, doesn't say anything about where the money's going. I, once again, would like to see, obviously, this, this person has done, done these in the past, what the, what a guesstimate would be in regards to a donation, that type of thing.
What, what he did today, he actually came in on his application, and he added to that application. And what he added on to that is, 50% of all signup fee will be, will go to the Park and Rec Scholarship Fund. So, I mean, if, in looking on his website, which this hasn't, he hasn't published anything on this because he won't until it's approved. But what he's saying is, if you follow, you can see how many people are registered. You can see, you know, the fee that he's having. But he's saying that of his, of his signup fee that's coming on, 50% is going to that scholarship fund.
Okay. All right. I guess, as we move forward, once again, I'd, I'd like us to, to really look at this sometime, at this year, in regards to how the, how the special use permits, how they're handled all the way through the process.
And we have talked about setting up a study session to get that, start tracking it, getting it ready for a study session.
I have a question.
Yes.
I'll make sure I get a key mark.
I have a question about the environmental impact of the color run, and here's what I experienced. I think three days after the first one, I was walking along Lake Colmire Trail, and yes, we've had an awful lot of rain. Along a part of the trail where I believe they had a blue color drop, there was a lot of gunky stuff on the edge of the grass, and the grass was kind of blue-green. So, I did a little bit of investigation, and supposedly it's food color and cornstarch. I know that there's other, someone else told me that there's a color, color drops are made on some of the streets along the route on which this is run. So, my question, I have an environmental concern about that, and maybe this is something you might want to run by Matt Duran, the stormwater manager. But what happens when, first of all, how is this stuff cleaned up at the end of the race? Because I got into it a little bit, so I can't, I can imagine other people's dogs, children, bikes, that kind of thing tracked it up. And my hands were stained for a while with, with the blue color dye. But I'm more concerned about what is the impact when all of this stuff is washed away with the rain into the river and into our stormwater sewers. So.
Very good question.
So, I did do some online investigation into the effects of cornstarch and food color. And as far, far as MSDS sheets go, the only thing with cornstarch is minor irritation. The MSDS sheets say that there should be no lasting effect, although I would be a little bit concerned of inhaling all of this stuff. I don't know what the effect of food dye is when you inhale it, but obviously, it's part of the cornstarch kind of thing. If someone signs up for the run and decides that that's fine, terrific. But my, my main concern is the environmental impact of this kind of stuff running into our streams and our rivers.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you. I've got one other question on, on 2.5.1, unless you've got one.
Yeah, I, 2.5, 2.2. Same one. I have a question. Jeanette, when he said 50%, 50%, you know, I mean, that's, I mean, I'm just, you know, if we made a dollar, is there going to get 50 cents? But, I mean, you could do whatever you wanted with that 50%. You know, I mean, that don't, tell, tell us too much.
Well, I know, I know on the website from the research that he's had in the past, you can actually see the number of people that have signed up to participate.
No, I understand, but you mean, you can do whatever. It'd be nice to see an estimate what that 50% will be, because you could do whatever you wanted with that.
Well, he'd have no idea of how many.
No, I understand, but I mean, it'd be nice to see one, one to have an estimate what that in total dollars and 50% would be, or, you know.
Nate, I mean, Kevin, you have another question?
Yeah, this is in regards to 2.5.1, the other special use permit. I'm looking at the police department notes, and it's showing three CSOs for three hours, and one police officer for one hour, with a total cost of $100. Is that?
Yes. That's the cost that we received from Chief Hiller. Yep.
Okay.
Yep, that is correct.
It's about right.
Yep. CSOs are very reasonable.
The CSOs are about $12 an hour.
Okay, so you've got, that'd be 36 times 3, that'd be $96 right there.
Officer's about 40.
So, that'd be $142, then?
Something like that, yeah. Something like that, yeah. That's his estimate, so it's. Any other thing?
No, that was it.
Okay, Kevin or Kyle?
Just to answer the question about, we did look into the color, was it ColorDash last year, kind of after the fact. Matt did look at the materials that are sprayed and as I recall, you're correct that the cornstarch and food color is what was in there. We didn't see an environmental catastrophe from, from doing it. So we did look at it last year.
Okay, thank you. Any other questions on the?
Just have a comment on the Bowlin Alley. You have a gentleman's agreement with Doug Hughes on the neighborhood thing? Okay.
Not on yet.
Do you have, I'll prove the consent agenda then.
That's coming up.
Okay, that, that with him is on the action item.
Oh, is he on the action? Oh, excuse me, I'm misunder, okay, excuse me.
Okay, now, all the consent agenda items with the explanation, any questions on that? And you will make a motion, you've made a motion to approve the consent agenda items.
Yeah.
Do we have a second to the motion? Second by Greg Schultz. Any further discussion? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? This has been approved. With that, we'll move on to action items and 3.1.1, letter of understanding with Spare Time Entertainment and we'll go to Chris.
Thank you, Les. As you know, this item was tabled from last time. Staff had some concerns with drainage on this and also we had concerns from the neighboring properties. We had the city attorney draft up a letter of understanding, just kind of clarifying responsibilities and how drainage issues would be handled and who would be responsible. And Cory is here to answer any questions that we might have. He has signed it and it's notarized. He's also met with Doug Hughes and addressed his concerns with noise and, and some of the other issues he had raised. So I feel we have everything that we need and would recommend approval.
Thank you, Chris. Any questions from the council?
I'll move, we approve three.
Motion by Raymond to approve this request. Do we have a second to that? Second by Brent Fenby. Any further discussion? See, none of all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? This has been approved. Thank you. And with that, we'll move on to 3.12, extend use permit to, of current liquor license for Spare Time Entertainment LLC. And again, Chris.
Yes. The next request from Spare Time involves an expansion of their area license for alcoholic beverages. They are requesting to be able to have liquor out on the volleyball courts. We have the recommendations from Chief Hiller and we see no issues with that. And they have, you know, indicated that they are, are open to meeting all of these concerns and staff would recommend approval.
Thank you, Chris. Questions from the council?
Motion we approve?
Motion by Nate to approve, do we have a second?
Second.
Second by Brent Fenby. Any further discussion?
Got a question in regards to the, the fencing around the volleyball. How high of a fence is that, will that be?
Cory, maybe Cory can, yep.
The, excuse me, the, it's not a fencing, it's a mesh, four inch opening mesh made specifically for outdoor volleyball. It goes up 16 feet. So we're about, you know, three foot higher than what they had in the neighboring property to keep balls contained.
So it, from, from ground level goes up 16?
From sand level, you're up 16 feet.
Okay, I would just, so alcohol will absolutely be, will remain in that area then? That was my concern.
Oh, yeah, 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 no, it's.
Unless you can sneak it through those holes.
You can throw it over.
Are we going to scale a 16 foot mesh?
Yeah.
There's a curve here.
Maybe underneath.
Okay, we have a motion and a second, any further discussion? See, none of all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? This has been approved also. Thank you, Cory, and good luck with that. With that, we'll move on to contracts and agreements. 3.2.1, conditional use, Scott Krampfith for Garage Edition at 1080 Oakview. And we'll go to Greg.
Members of the council, members of the public, Scott Krampfith, owner of the property at 1080 Oakview Drive Northeast, is requesting a conditional use permit to allow for a 20 by 30, 600 square foot addition to be added on to an existing detached garage. The existing garage is approximately 864 square feet and the total square footage will be 1,464 square feet. The zoning ordinance allows for garages to go up to 1,500 square feet on lots that exceed 30,000 square feet in total area. This lot is approximately one and a half acres, roughly 60,000 square feet. So this garage will be within all requirements. The close garage will be 24 feet from the closest property line, which is the rear property line, will be approximately 80 feet from the other property lines. It'll be 10 foot tall, the 16 foot wide overhead door install will meet all height requirements and all other portions of our ordinance. It will be constructed to match the existing garage as well as the existing house. There are no impacts to any neighbors on this request. One of our planning commissioners did talk to some of the neighbors out there and they did say that they had no concerns. There is an existing driveway that services the garage and so the garage will be used for personal storage for a camper, be able to drive around this circle driveway back and back into that new garage addition he's putting on there. So with that, the planning commission is recommending approval of this conditional use. Add some additional information if any further is required.
Thank you. Any questions from the council? We have a motion by Greg Schultz to approve, do we have a second?
Second.
I'm going to take Dave this time. So, second by Dave Burbank. Any further discussion? See, none of all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? This has been approved. Thank you, Greg. Then we'll move on to Resolution 34.1, Resolution 5913, to set a date for a public hearing proposed assessment for past due utility accounts. And that we will go to Chris.
Thank you, Les. As you know, we had started this process back in April, setting a public hearing for considering proposed assessment of delinquent utility accounts. One issue that was raised was if it was unclear if accounts with delinquencies prior to the approval of the ordinance on October 12, 2012, could be included in the assessment. So we tabled the public hearing and then passed a new ordinance on May 21st, which clarified that these accounts could be included. So we are now proceeding with the assessment process. City attorney has recommended that we follow the notice process again from the beginning and that's what we're doing now. And staff would recommend approval.
Thank you, Chris. Any questions from the council? What is the council's wishes? Motion by Greg Schultz to approve, do we have a second?
Second.
Second by Nate Dotson. Any further discussion?
Do we have a date pick, Chris, or?
Yeah, our, what is it, our next meeting in July, 2nd.
Oh, July, okay.
Yep.
Okay. Any further discussion? And all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? This has been approved. Now we move on to ordinance, the second reading of ordinance number 10 dash 13, amendment of off-street parking requirements. And this will go to Greg.
Members of the council, this is second reading on ordinance 10 dash 13. We recommend the amendment to off-street parking requirements for professional office spaces. The requirement is being changed to, for every 300 square feet of gross floor area. If you can answer any questions, council may have.
Thank you. Any questions from the council?
So move, we approve.
We have a motion by Raymond to approve this ordinance, do we have a second?
Second.
Second by Nate Dotson for the second reading, any further discussion? With that, ask for a roll call.
Councilmember Fenby?
Aye.
Trulson?
Aye.
Dotson?
Aye.
Schultz?
Aye.
Burbank?
Aye.
Rainey?
Aye.
Abraham?
Aye. All ayes on this, it's been approved. And with that, we'll move on to miscellaneous items, 3.6.1, approval of cable TV franchise audit proposal, Lewis and Associates. And that will go to Chris.
Thank you, Les. Under our current franchise agreement, we have a right to periodically review the data supporting the cable TV operators franchise fee payments. They are required to give us 5% of gross revenues. So it's advisable to conduct an audit every so often to ensure fee compliance. To my knowledge, I don't believe an audit has been conducted and therefore we should address it. We have partnered with the city of Albert Lee, who also has Charter as their cable provider. And working with them are recommending retaining Lewis and Associates to conduct the audit. They're a well-known firm and have done, you know, many cable TV audits. We, in researching their references, we had, you know, many positive comments. By partnering, we saved $2,000. So staff is recommending an option two, which is a three-year, three-year review of the accounts for a cost of $8,500 plus any out-of-pocket. We would recommend approval.
Thank you. Questions from the council? Raymond?
So far away from here, Florida?
I know, yeah.
Just when I looked at the.
I know, they are based out of Florida, but you know, nowadays you can just do everything, email and scanning and, yeah, it's, and they have many clients in Minnesota, all over, so.
Maybe Minnesota does this or not.
There was another firm, but not as experienced and, you know, not higher cost.
Well, I know, I looked at that too, but.
Any other questions?
Motion we approve?
We have a motion by Nate to approve, do we have a second to that?
Second.
Second by Kevin. Any further discussion? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? This has been approved also. Thank you. And with that, we'll move on to public comment. And if anyone would like to speak, please come to the microphone. And again, anything that's not on the agenda, and please limit it to two minutes.
Thank you, Les and council. I just came before you several months ago to ask you about where we were at with the cable TV franchise process. And since it's been a few months, I thought I'd check in again. Do we have a franchise agreement available to give to potential franchisees? Franchise work, franchisee?
Potential clients.
Well, potential people give us some competition because it's now been 10 months since we learned that we could contact competition. But the competition isn't going to come if we don't tell them what our terms are. And two months ago, I was here and we didn't have an agreement then. And I'm just checking in to see, do we have an agreement now?
I've been working with Bob Voss, our attorney. He had submitted me proposed ordinance. I had asked for some additional changes, you know, to make it address some of the issues that we had raised during our public hearing process and set that back to him. And I have not received it back yet, so.
And what will we do with it once we receive it?
We will send it forward to Charter and any other franchise or potential cable provider.
Okay. I've been doing a little reading since I was here last and under the Minnesota statutes, and Mark can correct me if I'm off base here. Chapter 238.081 requires that we publish our intent to franchise. When are we going to do that? Maybe I should address it to the chairman because you guys are the ones that. When are we going to publish our intent to issue franchises if in fact we, this applies to us, Mark, maybe it doesn't.
Maybe it would be helpful if you submitted that because I certainly don't know the Cable Act off the top of my head, Paul. And so if you want to submit the questions to us and then we can take the opportunity to respond to them.
Well, Mark, I think that's, that's an excellent point. I don't expect you to know it off the top of your head, but we have a consultant we're paying, I think, $275 an hour or two, who's guiding us through part of this process.
Yes.
And my point is, I want competition in this town and you as a council, with staff's help, are doing nothing to create it. Our local businesses, represented by the chamber, don't advertise on satellite TV networks. They advertise on local cable networks. We need competition to come to town. And we're sitting here 10 months since we knew we could have competition. We don't have anything to go forward with to gain that competition. We are now some four months away from our agreement with Charter expiring. I don't want Charter to go away and I don't think they will go away, but the, it was very clear to, from the council, that you understood we needed competition. But what I'm seeing is no action by this council to get competition. And it's very frustrating. And when we have a consultant, I think he signed his letter of engagement last June, now a year ago, and we're not aware of what the rules are? I, I don't expect you to be, Mark.
I explained to you that I'm more than happy to take your questions and to respond to them, but it would be more appropriate for you to send that to me in a letter. I appreciate that I have the right to visit with the council, but I'll have to check in because I don't know this off the top of my head. And you appreciate that, I'm sure.
I will, I will keep moving it forward, I'll agree to that.
Okay, fine.
Thank you. Anyone else?
I'm not going to.
Seeing none, we'll move on to council comment and we'll start tonight with Raymond.
I have nothing.
Nate?
Nothing at all.
Greg?
Nothing to say.
David?
Remind everybody, June 14th is Flag Day and please fly our nation's colors.
With pride. Yes. And we'll go to Kevin.
I congratulate Mr. Schubert on his retirement from the Park and Recreation Department and also congratulations to our high school graduates.
Yes. Coming up the next few days and summer's coming, yes. Maybe, yeah, maybe. Okay, Brent?
Nothing to add.
And Chris?
Just a couple of things, just a reminder, the Harry Winger Marching Band Festival is this Saturday. Parade starts at 11:00 and we just encourage everyone to come on out. It's a great event, lots of fun. Also, our summer reading program will be kicking off at the library this Friday at 9:00 AM. So it's a lot of fun and encourage everyone to come on down to your library and see what's going on.
Thank you. And I, other than congratulating all the high school seniors and their future endeavors and wish them luck, so again, congratulations, good luck for everyone. That's our entertaining motion for adjournment. Some of, motion by Kevin to adjourn, do we have a second?
Second.
Second by Nate, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
You adjourn.